So we'll call the meeting to order at official time of 7:06. And the first item on the agenda, Kristen?
Oh, it is review and approval of minutes.
Okay. So I was not at the last meeting, but for those of you that were there at the last meeting, had the minutes look okay?
I was here. The minutes look fine.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right. Minutes?
Yes.
All of those in favor? Okay. Approved. Minutes are approved.
Okay. And next is financial statement, warrants, but we will come back to that. That's okay.
Good.
And then unfinished business. Let's see where we can go to. Discussion. We should probably jump to the principal's report. We can do that. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I put in front of you a principal's report and a school improvement plan update. So the principal report, thank you for approving, for supporting our budget. We so appreciate our Conway Grammar School, the education we're able to give the students. Assessments, we've been, so the school improvement plan, just our update is there for you. We've been, we just jumped right to principal. We're doing what we can before we'll come right back to you.
Okay.
Assessments, we finished up the MCAS in grades three, four, five, and six, ELA in math. And grade five did science. The kids were, we couldn't ask for a harder working group of kids. They, they gave it all, they're all, they had growth mindsets. And we're just finishing up the NWA. So in the June meeting, I'll bring some data for you on that. Our summer programming, since our school's going to be closed for four or five weeks due to the water line, we're offering, we're back to offering the reading camp and STEM camp at Deerfield and Wheatley, which is what we've done in the past. We only ran out of summer program the past two years, and we'll get back to that next year. But we have, right now, we have about 10 kids signed up for the reading camp and about nine kids signed up for the STEM camp. We had a great staff appreciation week from our fabulous PTO. We have an arts night on Wednesday, June 5th. This is going to be something a little different than the school show. We're trying a little something different. The sixth grade will be doing a performance, actually. And then we're going to do some artwork and genius projects and robotics projects and a variety of different things. And then all the students will be performing a song with Mr. Tricia. So we're going to try something new this year.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
So I got the, I think I got a flyer.
Yeah.
That had all the important dates.
Yes.
But this is, you know, some new stuff. I'd love to, was it mentioned that the, it was going to be?
Arts night, June 5th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just the way, like, but that they'll also have the?
So we're going to have a flyer going home tomorrow.
Robotics.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah. We were just trying to wrap, we just had a staff meeting yesterday wrapped up all the final details, so.
Yeah, with all that new stuff going on, it'd be great to message that out.
Yeah. Yeah. Our breakfast program will start up in the fall. We're going to have a carp style, well, hot and cold. Students who are free or reduced will continue to get it free and reduced, and other students can pay, and they can pay for a la carte or full meal. I just wanted to mention that we have a new, I haven't mentioned this throughout the year, but we have had a new out-of-school time director, Jackie Cheek, who's done a great job this year. We had a great director before. We're wondering how the transition would be, and she's done a great job this year. Would you agree, Michael?
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a different vibe. They're two different people, but when I pick up my kids, they don't want to leave.
Good. Love that. That's great. Good. Our early release days in May, we had two school-based days. Once we, one, we worked on curriculum, and the other one, we did some work on growth mindset, and then we had a teacher collaboration day. Our teachers will be doing some summer work. We'll be aligning the standard, uh, science standards. And our instructional team and our professional development team will be meeting during the summer also to get us ready for the school year. I have a, just a great staff. They just, they are willing to put in whatever they need to put in to make it a great school. So thank you for your support. Couldn't do it without your support. So thank you. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Kristen, when the school's being closed down, since the water was fixed, I mean, there's no, like, we don't have to come in and, like, flush it or drain it or do anything weird.
Correct.
It should be just set to go and closed up for the summer.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Knock on wood.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Knock on wood. Correct. Yes. And we're doing it first thing, they're going to start the day after school gets out. So whatever time, you know, they might need a shorter amount of time, but last time, we started in August, so remember what that was like.
We had a time crunch.
Yeah. Yeah. Which might have caused, you know, it not to set or whatever the right words are.
Pure.
We love our hydration station. Kids think that's the coolest thing.
That is the way to go.
Yeah.
People noticed it at town meeting, I saw.
Yeah, we, yeah, great.
They didn't get to notice the new hand dryers, though.
No, but I do notice now there's two different styles of paper towel holders.
Uh, yes.
That's so fun.
Looks like there's lots of wonderful things happening to wrap up the year.
Yeah. We're really excited. I miss the little guys when they're away on their break. And then Mark, we're, okay, so I'm sorry, Michael, we, back to number three, financial statement and warrants?
Sure. So you have a warrant in front of you for time items totaling $91,284.73.
I got it.
You got it? All over like a cheap suit. So you have the results of operations through April. So through April, there's $571,000 and change remaining, or about 30% of the budget. The budget continues to track according to plan. However, two things to note and bear watching through the remainder of the year is that if you notice the substitute function, there's about $50 less left in it. So that's likely to run over in the next two months. And with the additional sub-teaching support that we needed earlier in the year, November and December, that's why it's almost fully expended at this point. Also, the custodial line, because of the extra sub-expenses that were incurred this year, will also run over budget once salaries are fully expended. So one of the things that we did was conduct a review of the salaries, because obviously one of the things that the budget doesn't tell you is where are we going to land with salaries, because salaries aren't encumbered, because they're paid on the town side of the accounting software. So what I did was I did this document that I gave to you all, and what this is, is all the salary lines in the Conway budget. So the first column is the budget balance remaining, and that's as of the 15th of this month. The encumbered balance is for the Conway salaries, how much we anticipate spending to pay everyone out through FY '19. So you can see that totals $375,000 and change. And then the column with the difference is the over or under based on the budget amount. So you can see that overall, the salaries for all the Conway staff are over budget projected by about $2,500. And of course, part of this is because of the sub-lines that we've had gone over, so it's, it's not a huge concern. So in continuing the projection, we took the total encumbrance that we know we're going to pay up for the salaries for Conway staff, and then we also took the assumption that all of the budget balances for the shared staff, shared services staff, which is $34,000 at the bottom of that middle column. If we subtract that from what we have available for the budget when I ran it as of 5/15, because I included the, the most recent salary that's been posted, that's $510,000 available. So if you subtract the 375 and the 34 from that, the budget has for the next two months about $100,000 of funds available for non-salary. So not in bad shape, and that's why we say projected to land on budget, because one, most of the expenses that we have are encumbered. We do have encumbrances in there that are included in there. So that's the available funds that we have to, to go through the remaining of the year, with the assumption that salaries are all going to be paid.
Mark, in this list, Mark, where would I find food service salaries?
Food service? Let's, I have to look and see if that is in the budget or if it's in.
I thought the first year, Phil, I thought the first year, wasn't it said that we weren't paying anything the first year? There was something, do you remember that? It said the first year we weren't.
Um, okay. I think we're in year two or three by now, but.
No, this is, no, this is the first year.
So food, so food service is, is FRD in this listing? And in the budget, it's on page five, and it's like the third line down? So it's, it's allocated about $4,600 for the year. And right now, there's $1,200.
All right. So that's the food service director line item?
Right.
Our share of the Frontier food service. Where would I find, like, our own food service employees?
Oh, sorry about that.
Well, I mean, but you, those are both questions I'd, I mean, but I'm just looking at this salary to see, the salary list, to see if everything, whatever, I mean, are there categories of salaries that aren't on this list that are not accounted for in your, the assurance is that all is well.
Right. Well, those get charged to the revolving account for food service.
Okay.
So it's not in the general fund budget.
All right. I actually understood that answer.
Okay. So basically, as I said, it was about $100,000 remaining to the next two months, excluding salaries, which are now all encumbered based on the calculations. And just to note, there's just been a lot of repairs over the last couple of months. The HVAC and heating has had a lot of issues. It's probably been over $10,000, but even at that, the budget is still in tracking to expend in the black. And the special revenue funds, like the early childhood and the school choice, are tracking according to plan as well. There's no, they're in the back of the budget here, and they're tracking according to plan as well.
Oh, there are a lot of things, when Bruce was out, that he could have taken care of that we had to call someone in for, and I think that's why we went. And plus, we had quite a few motors on our heaters blow. I think we had four motors blow this year, which is a lot.
Hmm. So they're new now and they'll last?
I don't know. I don't know when the last ones.
Hopefully.
They don't like them like they used to.
Any questions?
So the, so if I understand, the plan is that with the X, you're anticipating, we're anticipating to go over in, in custodial sub and in sub-sub. So there's money from salaries left over to do that? That's the plan?
There's money left over in the overall budget. If you look at that listing, the salaries themselves, if everything went to plan, you can see that, well, currently, right now, if you look at the sub-line, which starts with the negative 32, 31, that one's over, and then sped subs is positive by 26, and the pre-K subs is at 450. So that's got a balance of $49 right now if you add those together. But there will probably be more of those going through. So that will tip negative. And you can see the custodial salary line down towards the bottom, which is where the custodial sub gets paid out of, is projected to go over by $6,000. But the overall totaling of all the salaries is 2,500. And then, of course, you know, in the non-salary lines, you don't necessarily always expend everything that you have budgeted, so there's that additional $100,000 that can absorb the difference in the salaries.
There's, there's two warrants in here. One's for the carpet?
Learning, uh, learning lab, we took.
Right.
We hired, yes.
So that's, that's all set?
Yes.
Right, yeah. So that's good. And then there was the plumbing one? Is that from the, the tank work done in, says August and December?
That's what it says, August and December. I don't know. I don't see those, actually. Those were.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah, see, this is, this, I think, is being charged to the town. It says school capital water, water, ah, water well article nine. So it's coming through, and you're approving the fact that it needs to be paid, but it's being submitted to the town to be paid on a warrant that was already approved by the town.
Okay. From the tank work?
Yeah.
Done in August. All right.
I mean, that's, that's all well and good. The problem with that is that there's no one place that's counting, like, if we're trying to keep a track, um, how much are these repairs costing us, and there's like not one, any one place where, I know, it's, I guess it's the town administrator's responsibility to get the contractor to reimburse X, Y, or Z, but, you know, I don't know, there's no one person that's, like, in charge of what I, technically, he is, but does he know about this?
Well, you bring up a good point, because I said to Mark about a month ago, sort of ago, we were running over, I said, you know, I said, gee, Mark, some of these bills, which Mark wouldn't know, you know, are, I think, going to be, are supposed to be reimbursed, you know, some of these, the plumbing for the water tank and all those extras.
Right. And they're redoing the tank in June. So this is, you know, the, we're back plumbing.
Right.
It's all the work we did.
Mm-hmm.
But they're going to have to come back and do it again in June.
So I mean, I guess a solution would be for, can the school committee ask you to forward that bill to the town administrator with a note saying they, school committee asked to see if this gets reimbursed by the manufacturer or whatever?
Sure.
And that, that might just be the way to go with all these things that you think might fall into that category, to say, school committee is asking you to. Otherwise, the problem with, like, your professional town administrator class is that they don't really have skin in the game.
Yeah, because I know Bob on our side, you know, identifies the bills that should be part of that project versus general repairs. So that's how they get on the warrant that goes on the town side, but, you know, to your point, yeah, tracking it on the town side for reimbursement, it's a whole separate town issue.
All right. Well, that's good. We're not going to go broke this year. Next year, who knows? This year, we'll see.
Always makes me happy.
Yeah, me too. Michael, when you go back to new business, I think Phil and I could probably speak to the comprehensive school health grant. Did you talk about it at your Frontier meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. Um, our, our, I was going to say school nurse, but now she's nurse.
Leader?
Yeah, now she's nurse leader, but now she's about to transition into something else, because to be, this is a new title altogether.
Yeah.
So she's not just a nurse leader, she's like super nurse leader now.
The whole, yeah.
And, uh, there's more stuff to it. It sounded more impressive than ever.
Yeah. So we wrote, we wrote comprehensive school health.
What was that for detail?
We wrote a comprehensive service health grant for the whole district that included a, like, five.
That's it.
Nurse leader that would consult throughout the whole district. Right now, it's.
Here's the scope of services of that.
Oh, sorry. We were just moving along.
I appreciate it.
Separate your.
So they come in without a?
Bridge pro, that's it. The bridge program.
Let me jump right in? Kind of like I was here the whole time? So you just, you just opened this up?
No, we've been going, yeah, this topic just opened up. Yeah, we covered a lot of ground so far.
So, so basically, we applied for the comprehensive school health service grant, and we're rewarded $55,000 a year for the next four years. We applied for $70,000, got 55 because of either some, we appealed because of our SCS as a, our socioeconomic status, those students of higher need is higher percentage when you include the elementary to Frontier. Frontier alone is a little bit higher, lower needs, rather. You have higher needs, we add all the elementaries. But they use just Frontier's numbers when doing this. And they said that the grant didn't specify that Unit 38 was not the same number as Frontier, though when you look at it, that's debatable. So we appealed to try to get more. That didn't happen. But basically, the importance of, and why grants go to the school committees for approval is basically the year four contingency on this is that, not contingency, the year four stipulation of this grant is that the salary goes onto local budget. So that we'll be getting $220,000 over four years, $55,000 a year, but that fourth year, even though we're getting the $55,000, you can't use that money to pay the salary, which is about $40,000 for the part-time. And is that, and what I just handed out was a page that shows you kind of a basic outline of a budget for this grant. So for basically, you know, currently, we have a nurse leader stipend of around $12,000 per year. So we saved up that nurse leader stipend, that's not really how budgets work, but we saved up for that over the four year, over the next three years, we'd be close to paying for it that way. It is a regional thing, so Conway would be getting its share, which is probably around, you're talking about, probably about 10%, so you're talking about a $4,000 commitment to this position on, on that end, on the grant end. So the grant gets renewed a year four, so next thing would be what's holding us to make sure we do the grant. Obviously, in order to receive this grant, we have to file reports about our status and what we're doing each year. And then the fourth year, we have to apply to get the extension of the grant. There's two, two-years extensions at the, at the year four. So at that time, it'll come back before the school committee, and we can decide whether or not we want to continue funding it as a position, as a, as a .5 position, or do we want to go back to the stipend model, you know? So there is a kind of a check-in point, rather than that kind of, you add a position and it kind of, kind of goes away into the night, and then all of a sudden, it's in our budget for the next 10 years, and we asked how to get there. But these are how the, these are how grants are set up. They're set up to try to get the, the school or whatever government body to buy in. They kind of get you hooked, but, you know, I think the, you know, I put a lot of thought into this, because I wasn't sure if, you know, that hook always kind of upsets me, that they're kind of, you know, they're making us, you know, kind of buy into.
And then come up with money later.
Yeah. In the end, you're, you know, they're tricking you into expanding your services there. But I talked with Louise and Sarah, who do a lot of grant stuff, and they said that's how it always is, and you just got to keep an eye on it, play a little smarter, but you really, they said, if you said no to this, you'd throw away $180,000 that we can do to improve health services. They said you, they said, when you look at it through that lens, as long as we do our, our jobs with oversight, we should, we should be fine. So.
And what it's.
And Meg Birch is the, is the proposed nurse manager under this?
Right.
Correct.
And what it's, what it's adding for services is really important.
Yeah.
For students that are. At the, can't think of the right word, but just.
Vulnerable.
Right?
Vulnerable students. We're able to support them in ways that we might not be able to otherwise.
Absolutely. And it, you know, you don't have to read it now, but you're in the opposite, I think it's page, gosh, where is it? The last page, the bullet points is a nice little summary of the, of what the health services model program is, but kind of just talking about the different major areas that's going to go into. But one of the big things is that we have a lot of, you know, we have five schools with nurses that are just barely keeping up with systems and procedures. They are keeping up. I don't know if they're following behind, but, you know, they could have stronger systems and procedures, and this is going to allow them to have time, because part of this position and part of the money in this grant is to give them professional development time and pay for a nurse sub to come in so that they can learn more about either the software they're tracking information on. There's more and more students that are on medications, you know, we're seeing an uptick in diabetes, and the monitoring that the school nurse has to do. So all that kind of training and stuff falls within that grant as well. It's not just, when you look at, within the budget page there, you talk about consultants, that consultant's not just outside people talking, it's also allowing, paying for professional development for our people to go out, either to meet together to work on something, or to also go out and receive trainings and that kind of stuff. So.
Good.
So I need a vote from you guys to say yea or nay on that.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor of approving the comprehensive school health services grant?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Can I just mention that, so Conway will be looking for 17.5-hour senior part-time nurse?
So that.
Because it's a 35-hour week?
Yeah.
So we'll be looking for a 17.5-hour nurse. We put an anticipated opening out, and we have some good candidates. Meg, a teacher, one of the teachers and I would be maybe, if we approve, what would you get?
Right. Because, because the candidate for this is going to need to fill this role, right? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Well, Meg is doing that, so this is the other half of her position.
That's what I need. Right. Yeah.
And so we're four out of five there, by the way, on this grant.
Four out of five.
I mean, I know that Conway got the last vote in on the budget, but right now, you're four out of five. We're waiting, Wheatley to weigh in as well. But everybody else, everybody else has approved this grant.
Excellent.
It's one of the problems of having to do that when we don't do, some of this stuff should have happened in a joint meeting, and we weren't awarded this until after the joint meeting, so I have to take it for committee to committee getting, and then I don't know what happens if one committee says no. I kind of, I guess I know what happens. It ends.
We figure it out.
Would it still end if the other four towns would absolve the 10%?
And then that, that nurse leader doesn't oversee the nurse of that particular district? Yeah.
Are you foreseeing this not?
No, I think this will go through, but in the future, if we ever had one school not wanting to buy in because their needs are different, yeah, I don't know. I don't know how that works. I mean, the, the headaches of our configuration is just mind-numbing. Because there's no, what do you do?
We're not built for shared services.
Yeah, it's not, right. You know, in the, you know, really, there should be, it's a complete waste of resources, but there'd be more joint meetings, but having 25 meeting people around the table isn't exactly efficient, nor does it have pure representation, because you don't want to ask a question, because there's 25 people sitting around the table. And it's like, you know, you don't want to be that person, or maybe you want to be that person, and then the 24 other people are like, what's going on? So.
So there's good sides to our current organization in terms of, yeah. The way we run, do business now.
Yeah.
There are some good things about it, but there's complications.
Yeah, there is. So.
Yeah.
I don't want to jump into your meeting.
What's next on the agenda?
The next thing is.
Or she's, who's running the meeting?
Why? Sorry, I have to pull up the agenda on my phone, because I have a printed copy.
The non-salary recommendations.
All right. Can we move, Mr. Chair, can we move that to, you're at chairing this right, because you're the secretary. Can we move that to the end, because this is going to be executive session?
Yes.
Will you do all the executive session at the end? There's no business afterwards, so we can allow people to.
That's the conversation.
All right. Sure. The performance evaluation of the superintendent is the next one?
Correct. Yes, I'm sorry.
So we started talking about, we haven't done an evaluation, I mean, even though it's kind of my interim year, but we really have to start looking at evaluation, because that's one of the things that the school committee does. But talking about it, I think we had a good conversation on last Tuesday at the regional and all sets of the conversations at, I guess, at every meeting so far, regarding this, the Regarding this, the fact that we wanted to make it meaningful, but we also have to fall under the state guidelines of it. To agree that this is mandatory that you, you file that, so. Where we kind of left it at frontier. At the frontier meeting, which fills that and such, was. That I, I have a digital outline of the superintendent evaluation that I got from Judy Hul. And which will allow members to take it a lot more easier than the paper one where you had to go through, that you can kind of go into a Google forms kind of thing. The frontier committee suggested that. I put in bullets for each standard of things I've worked on. In the past, what was, happened was there was these binders that were created by the superintendent, putting hundreds of hours of the work, you, Dr. Carey did it in her first year. Marty Barrett did it in her years, but trying to create evidence that these things were met. So instead of evidence, we kind of went the route of, you know, you don't want me working on proving to you I'm doing my job, you want me to do my job. Is just putting in bullets of things that are where you're working on each one of the standards, maybe you have questions or you want follow-up, or you want evidence where you could say. I don't believe that you're building a rocket to go to the moon, you know, show us that, and I can bring you behind frontier where the rocket's waiting. But you understand what I'm saying, like, if I just talk about, I can make a list, instead of showing, giving you all the. Long report of a data of like, I'm working on the capital plan, instead, you know, working to improve facilities, I can say the frontier capital plan. The capital plans for, you know, each elementary school, that kind of, you know, those kind of things as an example. And just for this June, to see, and we'll try it in this digital form with this kind of way. And then next October, you know, they'll have the new school. Goals and strategic plan moving forward. To present, and then my next evaluation can be based off that, but we can see if we like this digital format. And then how members felt about using that for giving me feedback. Because the evaluation's not just about whether or not I'm proficient, it's about helping guide me and my administrative team of where we want to go. Does that make sense? It's not just, I mean, hire and fire of a superintendent is, most time happens outside of the evaluation. And so, but it also gives a way to give public feed, everything's public, you're welcome, and I said this to all the other meetings as well, welcome to give me feedback. You know, outside of this, or it's not public, a public. Evaluation, but my evaluation is public, so we have to, you know, part of this is about where are we going as a, where are we going as a direction of the school system? And, you know, areas you want to see more attention in or that kind of stuff based on evaluation, so. I don't know, so that's kind of where we're at, in talking about that.
I can think of our training that we got at MASC about how we can set goals as a school committee, and that. Sounds like it's a way to then. Share our goals with you through feedback.
Yeah. And then that's the other, you know, we talk about, it's good to have goals from, as from a school committee about. You know, what does the committee want to accomplish in a given year? And then those become instantly my goals to help you accomplish those, and for example, if you wanted to change. The way you did the budget process, or you wanted to, you know, if there was something that was broken, Conley's a pretty darn. Good system right now in the sense of, it's a, it's a well-run, it's a well-run school, it's a well, it's doing a, an excellent job, so. You know, setting goals sometimes can be, you don't want to set goals, you don't want to jump, make hoops that don't, jump through just for fun, you know what I mean, or maybe, if it's fun, but.
But maintaining our current system is a good call.
Yeah, I mean, I, when I went to those trainings and, and I heard that, yeah, MASC wants you to do it in a specific format. And, but the, they don't, the, DESI doesn't save them and there's nobody that reads them, and they actually do just throw them out when they get them. And when I heard that, I'm like, if, if there's a law and there's no penalty for violating it. Then it's not really a law, it's kind of like an advisory recommendation.
Right, and that's kind of where, you know, I mean, you know, the part of me that's just, I don't want to do it at all, I mean, I got a lot of other stuff to do, but at the same time.
And that's what, I would encourage that part, give voice to that part.
But at the same time, I'm trying to make it streamlined. In the sense of not spending a ton of time putting it together, you know, once we create this digital thing, you know, we'll just be updating it from year to year. What we, I saw from my administrator seat, not in the superintendent's seat, was a lot of people didn't do it. Even when there was trying times with the superintendent, where there was, you know, may some conflict, there was, this is, this doesn't allow me to get proper feedback to what I really feel. Because it's too constraining, and I think that was really voiced at the frontier meeting that. They didn't, some members didn't want to use it at all, they want to just. Write down what they, what they like and what they dislike, or, you know, give us a, give us an agenda of everything you've done in the last year. I mean, I have it actually, I have my, my monthly agenda is tracked of where I go, who I meet with and that kind of stuff. You know, but having that, you can see, oh, yeah, he's, you know, I don't know, I mean.
I've never seen one before, but it seemed like the last one I got under the other. That was over the top, am I wrong? There was, that was so lengthy that.
The evidence.
I didn't know if that was.
That's what, and that's where my.
It was huge, it was like a stack of papers.
And that's, you know, the program you're talking about, you go to the training, that's what they're asking people to do. And I don't see the full value of it, and I don't see the full value of it in the way we're set up as well. Because each school committee has a different level of, you know, I just left the school committee where it was, it's been budget and all budget all year long. Because there, you know, sometimes it was in a, I had a very difficult year, and they got through it and were very happy. But it hasn't been budget only here, and we talked about a lot of other things, a lot of things are priorities, so. You know, the goals are not equal between the two committees, yet there's five members in each committee. You know.
But like.
Go for votes.
I'm thinking about how I can improve my sharing of evidence as a teacher for my eval. And I'm. I think I'm just going to go with a shared folder link. And the folder is like the category, and I can put artifacts in that, instead of trying to share an artifact and share an artifact and share an artifact and share.
Right.
So like if it's around, you know, communication with school committees, there could be. A folder with your, you know, the reports that you prepare for our meetings. Just as a way to. Have a place where we could go look, you know, at, oh yeah, that's what we did back in November or something like that, I don't know.
And again, that's one of those things, like, how many of the 25 school committee members are going to go to a folder? They know exactly how they feel, or they know exactly what they.
Right.
Like to see improved, just from having conversations with people or that kind of thing. I guess sometimes it would be, what are we doing in? If a concern came up on something, you know, what are we doing in this area?
Right.
You know. I guess they could then go look under that, or they could just send you.
Well, just be like a, a way to make a digital binder instead of a printed.
Well, that's, that's the idea, the digital form, to make that a little more streamlined, and then. And then it was, was also said to have an area for comments of, it's not just selection, but you can comment on each area.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty, and it's also a pretty boring thing because it's either you're proficient. If your needs improvement, you got to explain to me why it needs improvement, you can't just say it needs improvement. And if you're exemplary, you got to explain why, so it's, it's set up that people are proficient.
Self-selecting.
You know, and then, I don't know, and to me, I don't look at it as a evaluation toward renewal, I look at it as an evaluation of. Are we, are we going in the same direction of what we want to be going, if that makes more sense, because. When it comes to renewing my, my contract, I'm not even talking about the, because I haven't even started my contract yet. But it's not going to be, okay, let's go pull up the last five evaluations, it's going to be whatever's going on that year. And the temperament of where people are at that kind of year, and if I said, well, I had all provision evaluated, you know, you can say, thank you, we. Had a nice run and we're going to go a different direction is what's going to be said, and then, or won't be said, they'll say, everything's going great and, you know, that kind, so it's, you know, I mean, I just. Just trying to be realistic to what the goal of the evaluation is, and it's really more about communicating, like, geez, we'd like to see a little more emphasis when it comes to the meeting. And we talk about the budget or something, that you have more insight as to direction on, you know, that, or, you know, whatever the. All right?
Okay.
Make sense?
I just hope it doesn't seem like busy work to you.
It's, it, that's my fear, but I'll let you know, it's also, as I do this mini kind of thing, I'll know how long it took to put together and. It's got a kind of, I don't want to say both, I'll do whatever you guys instruct me to do, but. I want to be able to get feedback, it says, oh yeah, this took me 10 hours to put together, and be like, well, this isn't worth it. You know what I mean, or, you know, that kind of thing, what part is it useful, so, I wanted to at least start something this year. Originally, I was like, I want to, it was interim year, I don't have to really be evaluated, you're evaluated by, you're giving me a contract, right? But I think it'd be good to do a little kind of test run.
Almost like a survey.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
I mean, this is, this would be the fourth iteration of superintendent surveys I'll be experiencing, and.
That'll be the one that gets the most comments, is what was it like to do this survey?
Yeah, I mean, so, so far I can say that I've not gotten a thing out of any of them, so.
Phil, stay optimistic.
Yes, yes.
I'm going to approve you.
Yes, yes, you have so far, in every respect, mindset, yes, yes.
All right, good, all right, so what's the next thing? Oh, central office staff changeover, so, just kind of keeping people up to date, I know I've sent out a lot of emails, but. We all know the lease law is finishing up in the next month or so, and Kim McCarthy, you got my email there, is going to be taking her position. I am in the final stages of replacing Kim McCarthy's, as a early childhood director's position, so that'll be, hopefully by the end of the week, announced that. In this, in these conversations, other school committee members have asked, you know, do I think about reorganizing in the sense of trying to save money through administrative costs? Because whenever you have a vacancy, are we looking at that? And I, and I just explained at my last meeting that I really didn't see a way to reduce, I could see a way to expand, you know what I mean, in the sense of. I didn't expand, but I could see in the sense of reduction, the amount that the early childhood coordinator is doing in all the schools, and the amount of students that. That position services, and the amount of, you know, early sped intervention and that kind of stuff that's being done, I can't see a reduction there. But it was just brought up and I just wanted to kind of extend that, that those conversations were what happened. Ballesco's last week is the first week in August, I currently have the facilities director's position posted and will be doing interviews in June. So. We'll see where that goes, and I hope to have about, probably about a week overlap. As you know, you guys go with Shelley Correa in for the business manager position, she is going to start, she's going to do about. Eight or 10 days in June, and then the full month of July, we're going to overlap with TMS, so with Mark and Judy to help with the onboarding and, and doing that. And so they, and they've been great about helping me get that kind of set up for that transition, so that's been great.
I did hear a suggestion from somebody that they thought in her first week or so, she should just do the little tour of the town halls and just stop in and introduce herself everywhere.
Yep, and I think that's, I agree, in getting to know each, in, I also said on the list, meeting with each principal, kind of going over the highlights of the budget. As aside from all the X's and O's that happen behind the computer screen, so to speak, but. We'll get lost in very quickly. So, anyway, those are the positions there. About that, that's what I wanted to talk about there.
And then next is school committee meeting date.
So our next school committee in June, there was a conflict.
The building's going to be closed.
Building's closed, so we can do a couple of things. We can move it, because we don't have to meet here. We can move, we can meet in any public building. Which probably be, we need, so we have that, the other, you guys talk about. The fact that we have a vacant chair, and we got to figure out what we're going to do there, did it come up at all yet? All right, so. You know, Dr. Campbell's out of town on business, but the IRA's position. IRA wrote himself in, didn't write himself in, but had some, a couple of write-in votes. And someone else had a couple of write-in votes, so. We were instructed by the town clerk to give a recommendation for the vacant position, because no one was officially elected. Apparently, I don't know if there was enough write-in votes or what the story was there. I had a conversation with IRA today, he is stepping down from his, his work on the school committee, so. So he's not an option anymore. The other person who did a write-in vote, this, so I found this out about midday. But I heard about IRA stepping down, so that, you know, he was kind of probably the no-brainer moving forward, it's up to the committee, but, you know. The other person was written in, I believe, in every vacant position, so I'm not sure if that is a true.
Oh my God.
If that is a true interest or someone who's really looking at it.
All but two, or just one?
Well, he's only, he's only on this, he would be available as like a backstop to you if you decide to. That you don't want to do that. Which I.
Yeah, he, he sends confusion there, he said, I thought I was going to go on and then it didn't happen, and then, so there was amongst the communication, so I'm not getting in the middle of any of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're on the ballot, so you got elected, so you got to do it.
No, I'm not trying to back out, I'm just.
All right.
The other, well, I mean, the other question is whether you wanted to do both, that's why I called you today, because I didn't know you were leaving this to do frontier.
No, I'm not leaving, I'm, no.
Thank you.
I'll just do both.
Okay.
Woo-hoo.
But somebody else has to take a collaborative, I've mentioned that, I haven't been going, so somebody else.
What did they do?
Free dinner.
So we got, you know, we didn't do that. So I don't think we should reorganize until September, because we don't even know who's going to be on the committee until this committee. I've never seen it this way, usually the select board just chooses someone.
Wait, so who's the other person that's written in?
The select board is looking for a recommendation?
Yeah, the recommendation from the school committee is always what they.
Was that normally happened?
Yeah, from the existing committee.
We don't have a recommendation for this month, so we're going to do the recommendation next month.
But who else was written in, you can't say?
No, it's public, it's on the.
It's public information.
It's Hazel Goldman, and she was written in for.
Hazel?
All but two, I think all but two, she got two write-in votes for everyone.
That's awesome.
Yeah, but, do you hear me?
Yes.
Like, so I don't know.
She was written in for constable, she was written in for a, a bunch of other things, so we didn't know if she has, if her siblings were pulling a fast one on her? Or if she was really interested in getting involved in a lot of.
Someone has to contact her and see if she wants to.
I don't think so, no, not according to what I contacted, took her office, it said that you had to appoint someone, you had to recommend someone.
But we knew that IRA had taken on one last year, right?
IRA said he was going to stick around, he actually made the decision today, so.
Okay, all right.
We were in a email back and forth when he finally said, you know what, I actually, this is actually probably an easy way for me to step down. So.
I just want to say, because of my, I was in Amherst, if that tells you anything about my confusion as to the phone call. I was in a very hot greenhouse with crazy people that live in Amherst, so I was kind of like, what, what the heck is?
Oh, when I called you today? You were in a marijuana greenhouse?
No, 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 I was in a very hot greenhouse in Amherst with a line of angry people, which is why I was kind of confused on the phone, it's not my usual.
That's, that's fine, you're off the hook. I'll, I'll change that in my notes.
It's not how I usually answer the phone.
Not completely out of it.
I feel like I'm a natural person to volunteer for the collaborative part.
I would say that you're the natural person, that you should do it.
I just finished my program with them, and so I know the, I have lots of contacts there, so.
Well, we can just kind of take over for a while, you can appoint yourself as being chair right now. So why don't you just go, you can go, I don't, you know, I think you probably should do a reorganization in September when we have the new membership, but I don't think anybody's, I've never seen anybody fight over the collaborative position, so. I'll be honest, I've never seen a contestant.
No, it's just a matter of. But it's, it's one of those, you go if you can, right, but you try to go, right?
No, they'll email you, they want a head count because they feed you.
Yeah.
So.
Great, so they, they want to know when you're coming, but you can miss meetings, is what you're saying.
Yes, it's every other month, too.
It's every other month and.
Don't want.
If you can go to, if you can go to, you know, three a year, I think is what I, is probably the going number amongst most of the members of that thing, so.
Yeah, I just have to think of family obligations.
If we see someone who's a good candidate.
I think what we probably should do is nominees, possible nominees that this committee. Put together should be then sent to the chair for, it's really comes, becomes her job, comes Elaine's job to contact them, see if they're interested. Bring the names forward to the next school committee meeting, have you guys vote to recommend someone to move forward. And then it goes to the select board for them to then do the paperwork to start in September. And we just run with a four-person board through the hard work of June.
Right.
But if you have a name, you, you should bring it forward, I mean, if you could come up with a name.
I approached somebody last year and. I got a huh, so I didn't push it, so.
So, I mean, right now, I think it's, I think it's better than rushing something through tonight in any way, finds, you know, kind of get it back out there, find someone who's generally interested in. Doing this, and if this, if this Hazel, I don't know Hazel.
So know her very well.
Phil knows her very well.
Was IRA on search finishing a two or a three year?
I think he was a two-year, I think he was an appointment, he was an appointment, I forget, he was an appointment as well, maybe.
It, it was about to start a new three-year, so he just did one of the three years.
So it's a two-year.
The nine was two-year, I think so.
I think that's probably, that's probably the best way to do it anyways, because if there's anybody out there who's interested, interested in doing this, they can.
How do we? Add, like, how do we let people know that?
You got to go, you just ask them.
Face to face, kiss the babies, shake the hands.
Is that kind of?
I always start with the part.
Is that how you go to this?
No, I, I start with the part about, hey, you want to go to the inn once a month with a bunch of nice people?
Do you want to do this survey, this really fun survey?
First we go to a school committee meeting.
We do the superintendent's survey, it's so fun, I just shred them after we do them.
I can't remember how many, it was just two years ago, and I came in May just to see what was going on here, and now. Oops, I came to a meeting.
Somebody handed you a packet, you're like, what's going on here?
Yeah, I kind of set you up for that, didn't I?
Next month, anyhow.
All right, so, anyway, so the meeting day conflict, so. Should we keep the date and change the location? I mean, we could go, we could try to move, meet in the library in the center of town or the town hall.
What's the date and time again?
The schoolhouse.
The one-room schoolhouse.
Or the one-room schoolhouse.
Again, that's kind of tradition.
That was, that was my first actual meeting.
That was awesome.
At the schoolhouse.
I have a short agenda. Have a short agenda.
What?
Have a short agenda.
Somebody brought muffins.
You're bringing all your EVI data.
We'll see, we'll see.
You had your EVI data in my first meeting, I'm like, whoa.
If we can't, we'll meet on the front steps.
It was just a little padlock.
I have a key, we have a key.
Oh, do you have a key?
We do.
Who owns it? The town?
The Conway Historical Society.
It was brought down with Otson.
The town, the town.
I've got a whole bunch of pictures, actually, if you want them, or if you want them, we were doing family photos.
Do we dress in 1900 attire?
No, much more casual than that.
Oh, would have run it.
Why do you wear that outfit?
If you really want to.
What time is it for on the 18th?
FCAT, FCAT needs like a 50-foot extension cord, because the power is in the sheep barn across the little right away.
Jeez.
But we did it in the morning.
There's no more sheep there, it's just called the sheep barn, now it's just a storage barn.
We did it in the morning on the Saturday.
For the 250th anniversary.
That is probably the funniest thing ever, be sure you're charged.
Now, there's no school on June 18th, so whatever, you know, just to let you know.
It is at 7:00 right now.
On June 18th.
It's going to be cold in there at 7:00, or really hot, though.
It's perfect.
What if it's freezing?
Is there...
The wood still works.
It's going to be dark.
The wood still works.
It'll be...
No, it won't be dark.
It'll be quite dark.
Will you want to move to 5?
It's 8:00 now.
You want to move to...
I have a Sun Donlin at 5:30.
Oh, oh.
On that day?
On that day, it's not one of those back-to-back ones, which isn't, Sun Donlin goes along, they like to talk.
I'm okay with the 20th, or, or the 13th.
Oh, I see, right.
Or the 11th.
So...
Is there any reason not to do it earlier that day? Instead of, like, before 5:30? Because school's out.
I'm always open to, oh, that's right, yeah, we could...
The school's out, so we could be...
So what if we...
Business...
We could have coffee mimosas, we can do it in the morning.
I'll be, I'll be on summer vacation, so... Are there any conflicts with the afternoon of the 18th?
So why don't I do this, why don't I do, because Elaine not being here is kind of crucial, too, so why don't I doodle the whole day? And everybody can pick times throughout the whole day into the evening, and I'll just block out, I think, the Sun Donlin School Committee is the only thing...
And then the other, the other thing would be to hold it the week before, while the building is still occupiable, or is that time correct?
That's a tough, that's a tough, it's the last week of school.
Yeah.
You know, we already got two on the Tuesday.
Sure.
And I think every night's a different graduation, or retirement, or...
All right.
And it's summer celebration.
Yeah, so doodle poll for the 18th.
All right, yes, doodle poll, write this stuff down here. All right, what else have we got here?
We did, so, okay, so I have this in print, sorry, we already did capital project committee, we did all the reports, so...
All right, then my report has to be quickly, right, my report just has to quickly be done, just because there's only one thing on there, there's only one thing I'm going to go over. Barry talked about all the positions and stuff, now, there's a new interpretation of the school choice rules right now, that was just put down by Desi in early May, that basically said that regional schools that are not regionalized from K to 12 must, do not get automatic entry from the sending schools into the regional schools, okay? So what that would mean is that you had a, and this goes into effect, everybody's grandfathered in starting now, so everybody's grandfathered in, but next year, starting any new school choice student, so if you had, someone entered in kindergarten and said, "Oh, I want to go to Front, I want to go to Aldridge Conway and then to Frontier," they don't automatically get in, and it'll be a lottery to get into Frontier pending the space. I can't predict seven years from now what the space level of Frontier is going to be, and, you know, our past practice has been, if you school-choiced in the elementary school, you automatically got into Frontier. So this, so we didn't know where this was coming from, and I've since had a conversation with Mike Morris, who's the superintendent in Amherst, this affects Amherst as well. And they actually have a lottery system for school choice for the middle school, because of their, the way their numbers are situated, we've always had, we've only had a block at the last couple of years, but usually there's been enough, you know, slots where it didn't really make a difference. But he contacted the state, and, you know, to find out what the heck's going on here, they didn't even realize from his conversation that this impacted us in this way. He did a little more research, and there's only nine districts that this affects, and you probably could take a population of those nine districts and put them in a Brockton High School. But, so, they said, "Why don't you file for special legislation to allow regional schools to work in agreement with their sending elementary schools to take their school choice students?" And so, if you can pass that law, so right now, he is sending a letter to Joan Crawford to propose this bill as part of the budget, apparently they add on these little, these really non, not really big impact bills to the budget bill, and, you know, I'm signing on to that, so, so if it gets passed, then we won't see any change. If it doesn't get passed, then I'm going to have to add to the school choice, this does not guarantee placement. Although, we've gotten everybody in so far, but this doesn't guarantee placement, and that, you know, if someone was kind of nervous about it, it could cause them a choice to choose a different elementary, but I think we can get everybody in, but...
But it creates this dialogue that we wouldn't have to do otherwise.
Right, and it's also so far down the road, seven years down the road for the first class for that, because we don't get a lot of school choice through the years, we get a few here and there, but I don't even know how they're going to track that, but that's a whole nother side conversation. So anyways, that's what's going on there, and hopefully we'll get that, hopefully I'll report to you in June that that got passed moving forward.
Okay.
And any other stuff was just, right now, the budget's in the Senate, this week, they're doing all the deliberations about what they're doing. When I went to the House, I kind of gave you a list on the second page of my thing about how they just kind of basically cut everything, that was, all those little miracle things that we were hoping to help us with, from rural aid to transportation and circuit breaker, all the different kind of things got shot down, so. There's a bunch of things in the Senate right now, I sent that link out to all of you, but we'll see what happens this week.
So would there ever be a negative thing at school, I mean, would there ever be a time where you wouldn't want to potentially take a student, just because the debt of their needs would outweigh their contribution?
So we can't do that, we can't, we can't be selective of who the school...
So you have to just take them all.
It has to be a general lottery, okay? However, we did last year stop school choice in 7th and 8th grade. The current 8th grade maxed out, right? So last year, 7th grade, we said no more school choice coming into 7th grade, so no more, no third-party people could, you know, if you started somewhere else, then come for Frontier if you weren't in our district, because we wanted to, we had a 24 cap for the middle school, at least we try, you know, and then, you start at 24, then some kid moves in and the schedule works to make 25, but for the most part, we try to do under 24, and most class sizes are between 18 and 22, we try to keep them that small. So we said, "No," and so that's what we did, so that was kind of the one year where we had to turn people away, but that's the way it happens. And I think the current sophomore class, the same thing happened, so we had to turn them away, I think it was the 8th grade, we shut that one down. So, but, you know, in, right now, the, there's so much movement for school choices, people are, there's a lot of struggling districts around us, and so we're seeing a lot more movement than we have in the last couple of years of, you know, I don't know if we're just kind of, we're just kind of far enough away or closer to kind of the less rural environments where they're struggling to hold on to their students, and we're getting more choice, start programming, what we can offer, those kind of things, but, you know, it's kind of spiraling on itself.
It only takes one bad hire to like implode one of these districts, and, you know, you